At six o'clock, we want to call the meeting to order for the Granville County Board of Education's October 7th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. We do have a quorum. I believe Dr. Frederick will be joining us. Is he? Not yet, but he will be joining us. Just let us know. Our vision for Granville County Public Schools. Every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission, we empower every student every day. For a moment of silence, I'd like to ask that as we lower our heads and meditate, that we remember our neighbors in western North Carolina and think of many ways that we can all help them recover. They're certainly in our hearts and in our prayers. Thank you. Mr. Peace will lead us now in our pledge of allegiance.
Stand, please.
(inaudible)
Next on our agenda is the adjustment of agenda and/or adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that needs to be added? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion should be made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we will hear from Doc Winborn for his superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, team members, and those community members in attendance and those joining via the video. This evening, I'd like to take this opportunity to address three very important topics. First, Hurricane Elaine, as you mentioned, Ms. Williams. I'd like to ask that all those listening tonight continue to keep your thoughts and prayers with our family members, our friends, and our neighbors in the western part of our state. The devastation in those communities there is unimaginable. The number of fatalities continues to rise, and entire communities have been completely destroyed. There are still more than 150,000 people without power and many more than that without water. And right now, there are 15 school districts, entire districts, that are closed, and some of those are not certain when they will be opening. I want to commend our students and our faculty groups who've already responded to this call for help. The need obviously is very real, and while supplies and provisions are definitely needed, what I'm increasingly hearing, especially from our fellow educators in that part of the state, is that monetary donations are what truly will help at this time. If you haven't already, please consider donating to the effort, and we have posted contact information for valid reputable agencies on our district website and our social media accounts. So I urge you to refer to those so that you feel comfortable and safe in providing donations that you know will go directly to those who need it most. I hope that you may find a way to just lend any amount that you can. It's definitely a terrible time for them. We will continue to be responding to the superintendent and boards of education in those, I think there are 15 counties, as if they require any sort of special assistance that we can provide. So we'll stay in touch, and, board members, I'll be sure to advise you as I get that information. Next, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank everyone for making safety our number one priority in our school district. As I hope many of you saw and heard, we've been on a campaign lately to end these threats of violence in our schools and our community. We've been working hard to empower others to help with this. I've been making some special messages and calls to help to our students in particular, and they've really done a wonderful job. I want everyone to know that in the past two weeks, there have been several threats made against different schools in our district, and of course, as those occurred, we notified our parents and worked closely with law enforcement. Some of those threats were made using smartphones and social media accounts. Some were just word of mouth. Others were physical messaging written on bathroom stalls and so forth. But I want everyone to know that in working with law enforcement, we were able to identify each and every individual who made those threats, and we were able to hold them accountable for their actions. I want to let everyone know that if you make these threats, you will be caught, and the consequences are very, very real. So please, again, thank you for doing your part, parents, students, educators, board members, and do not forget, if you see something, say something. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the difficult conversation that our board is having regarding school reorganization. Many of you here tonight in the audience, or whether in person or watching on the video, may be here specifically to learn more about this topic or express your opinions, and I want to remind everyone that this is extremely important work for our board. And of course, I have no vote in this matter, but I am very proud of our board for having the courage to face this difficult issue and make tough decisions. In my mind, this is a very critical turning point for our school district. We are, as you've heard many times in recent meetings, in a terrible place financially, and our school district is funded primarily based on student enrollment, not the number of schools we have. Many of our schools are only two-thirds full, and we are literally throwing money away by continuing to operate so inefficiently. We must reduce the number of schools we administer, and we simply are just unable to sustain this current model. And our students, they're the ones that deserve better academic opportunities, better extracurricular opportunities. They deserve more resources and better facilities. They deserve an efficient school system where their needs are prioritized without wasting any of our precious resources. If we reduce our footprint, then we can reallocate those wasted resources into making our schools better. So please, if you haven't already, those of you in the public listening tonight, I urge you to review these studies that have been shared in recent meetings and familiarize yourself with all of the facts, and I appreciate your patience and your understanding and support while these difficult decisions are made. I just think it's so important to remember that these seven public servants on our board genuinely have the best interests of all of our students at heart. So thank you. That concludes my remarks, and I look forward to a productive meeting this evening.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we do welcome you, those that join us tonight as we conduct the business of the board. Our committees have been very busy meeting and discussing many of the issues that our school system faces. The minutes of all committee meetings can be found in our agendas, which are online. All committee meetings are noticed and are open to the public. I would like to thank all of these board members here for their hard work on these committees. In addition to attending committee meetings, I was able to attend Curriculum Night at Wilton Elementary School, as well as this past Saturday's Fall Festival. Both were well-attended. I also was able to accompany Ms. Rice on walkthroughs at Cradle Elementary School. Seeing students engaged in learning is always a reminder of the hard work and dedication of our teachers and staff. Volunteering in the Reading Buddy Program at West Oxford this school year has been very rewarding for me. Granville County Public Schools welcomes volunteers in our schools, and we encourage our community to get involved. Ms. Hayes, Mr. Peace, and myself had the opportunity to go for a short ride on the new electric school bus. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank Dr. Chris Hamm, our Director of Transportation, for all of his efforts and success in updating our fleet of buses and the planning for future transportation needs. He has a tough job managing transportation for this county, and we really do appreciate him. I would also like to commend Dr. Winborn, Keith King, our school's safety director, administrators, school resource offices, and law enforcement for their continuing focus to keep our schools safe. As Dr. Winborn indicated, threats against our schools will have severe consequences. Even a threat made as a prank is not harmless. Such threats are upsetting for students, staff, and parents, and disrupt the instructional day. The time spent locating the source of the threat takes valuable time away from administrators, our SROs, and law enforcement. We ask that parents continue talking with their children about the serious consequences of threats against any of our schools. Tonight, we will again be discussing the studies for school closures and consolidations. In a county of our geographical size, declining enrollment presents us with many challenges. Our duty as a Board of Education will be to make the decisions that will best meet the educational needs of our students with utilizing the resources that we do have available. I thank you. And our next item on the agenda is 303, North Carolina School Board Association Voting Delegates. We can have up to four, and we do have to approve these as a board. Ms. Hayes, are you planning to go?
If the board is okay with it, I enjoyed the whole event last year.
Okay. Ms. LeBrecq, are you going to be able to? Okay. I'm not going myself either. Dr. Lindsay?
Yes, I'll be up to 10, not all, probably one or two sessions.
Mr. Peace?
Yes, I'll be there for the delegate assembly.
Okay. We can have up to four.
I'll be there for the delegate assembly on Monday.
Great. Okay. Ms. Anderson?
No, I'm alone.
Okay. And is Dr. Frederick with us now?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. I won't be able to attend that either.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Hayes, Dr. Lindsay, and Mr. Peace to be our board's delegates for the North Carolina School Board Association Assembly that votes on different things that do come forward?
Yes, I would like to make that motion of the names that you just mentioned for attending.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion should be made in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. We appreciate you guys being willing to do that for us. Now, we'll have reports from our other board members if you have something you want to add. Start with Mr. Peace.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, I had the Operations Committee meeting on the 9th of last, 26th last month, I'm sorry, and we had a productive meeting. We have a list of items that we discussed. Some of them are complete, but we have a lot of incomplete items that needs to be dealt with as funds avail themselves. The minutes within the board, Dr. Backus, if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask and we'll discuss it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I attended the Academic and Finance Committee meetings this past month, and then also the Granville Ed Foundation met today. They mentioned the fact that they have completed the first round of grants, and that total that they were able to give out was about 26,900 across about 18 different grants. They will be going through the second round of grants, and the deadline for that is November 4th. So if any teachers listening did not get their submission accepted this time around, please, please, please resubmit. You are able to either resubmit as it was done the first time around, or you can make And then also, the Granville Foundation has approved funding for sending elementary school kids to attend the North Carolina Symphony Education Concert after winter break. So I'm very personally excited for that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Are they gonna do the Pagan Raffle this year? Is that being discussed at all? I haven't heard anything.
I haven't, no, nothing yet so far. Yeah.
They shared, the meeting today, they were planning an event around winter break where they would tour different historic homes in Oxford as a fundraiser, and the Pagan Raffle was on hold.
Okay. I did attend the Finance Committee meeting, also the HR meeting as well this month, and you'll hear more from them as we progress this meeting here, but we still have to make some real tough decisions this year as we move forward to the 25, 26th school year based on schools not being at capacity. So we gotta hear more about that and make some real tough decisions. I also had a chance to visit several of our schools through the month of September. It was an unscheduled visit, just for the drop-in, see how things were going. I should thank them for doing our hard work and trying to keep our kids on task here. Some of my takeaways were, the grounds were very well-kept, schools very rich and clean and inviting. Christians were monitoring kids in transition. There was evaluation, conducting team meetings here. I even saw a volunteer in our school as well, volunteering her time. I thank her for being there, and I really feel good about what we do in our schools here, trying to make sure our schools are safe, where our kids can thrive there and achieve great outcome in the school year. So, great job our Christians are doing in our county.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Yes. I'd just like to mention a couple of events that I did attend over the past week. Back last Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Thursday evening, I attended the retreat of the Caucus of Black School Board Members, and that was a very, very enlightening event where the people from the caucus did talk a lot about things going on for our students, you know, and I noticed that, just looking at the agenda for this evening, Jamar will be doing some talking with regards to some things that they said at that session, so I'll be looking forward to that. Also, I attended Students of Merit Ceremony at J.F. Whale, and that was a very touching event as well. And of course, as far as the committees, I have attended the Policy Committee meeting, which that'll be addressed more this evening, the Finance Committee, and as well, and the Academic Committee meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Hayes?
Thank you. So I did attend the South Granville Student of Merit Ceremony, and I just wanted to recognize the large amount of students that received that recognition for the past school year, and also commend their families for all of the support that they get, because I think that's invaluable, and we really appreciate them. Also, I wanted to commend our CTE programs and the great effort that Ms. Rodenbach put into the Careers on Wheels. I did text her and let her know what a fabulous event it was. I think this was my third year going, and it was an insane amount of trucks out there. I don't think there was any empty room in the parking lot. It was so fantastic, and it seems like the kids really enjoyed it. So that was a fun time, and the weather held off. Nobody got rained on, so that was great. And also, Constitution Day, so I want to thank all the board members that were able to come out. I did not go to Northern Granville, so I'm not sure who was there, but thank you so much if you were able to make it. And I know that we also had some City of Creemore officials come out, a couple of the county commissioners who showed up, and then also Representative Sossaman and Senator Bodie also came out, so I really appreciate them showing up for our students and making that such a great event, and I hope that we can continue it in the future. That's my hope. Also, I wanted to thank the Creemore PD for National Night Out in Creemore. That was a huge event at the South Granville Parking Lot. There was a ton of community members, and everything was free, and I wanted to thank Ms. Daisy for bringing out the book bus. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for making that happen. I saw a ton of kids going by getting free books, and so that was amazing to be able to provide that for the community. Also, I went by South Granville last week on Wednesday and was able to see them start the process of putting in the new bleachers in the gym, so I was really excited to see that, and I hope everybody is excited as I am about seeing some progress on some of those projects, and I look forward to seeing the beginning of the weight room renovation as well. I also wanted to, obviously, some of you might have gotten this message about the upcoming Fall Law Conference being canceled in Asheville, but if you didn't, I did want to say that they are going to be moving some of those online, and so, and they were really informative last year, and so if you're able to, I encourage you all to take advantage of those. And I think, oh, I want to thank our staff and our superintendent for all of their work on the studies, the consolidation and closure studies. I don't think that people realize that the work that you did actually saved our district tens of thousands of dollars not having to outsource those studies, and so when we say that we are being careful and calculated about every single thing that we do, it is right down to the studies that are being done, making this decision, and I want to thank you guys for all of that work and also your effort in being transparent, being willing to sit at the table with us and answer our questions as we make these hard decisions, and we appreciate you.
And Chair, one more item. She talked about the Constitution, and you and I.
Yeah. That was fun.
That was fun. You and I participated together and actually had students in the room, and we were asking them questions and...
They asked us some tough questions.
They did. They did.
We had conference afterwards. We didn't know if we needed to maybe try to teach a social studies class or not, but they did ask some interesting questions.
Yes.
To be that age. I had a senior moment. I forgot. I did go to the Granville Early College Student of Merit event, and that was nice, too. They had that over at the Vance Granville, a community college over in Vance County, but there's a lot of students recognized in that, too, so don't want to forget that. Anything else? Item, I believe we are going to public comment. Is that it? Okay?
Yes. So, Madam Chair, there were three online public comments, which each of you should have in your folders tonight. There are printed copies there, and we do have one individual signed up for in-person public comment.
Okay.
So each speaker will receive no more than five minutes to present comments. However, the public comment section will not exceed 30 minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through applicable GCPS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. So the public speaker tonight is Braden Julian with the topic of Granville Central High School consolidation.
My name is Braden Julian, a sophomore at Granville Central High School. I'm here to speak to you all today, obviously, about the school consolidation. It's been a subject heavy on our minds the past couple months, as the consequences seem unfathomable. I'm sure you've heard that there will be 881 students to each school in the board's ideal vision. I'm sure you've all heard that there's no EC department at South Granville High School, which would leave the students in the southern region of Central's district driving all the way to Webb. I'm sure you've all seen the lack of parking between South and Webb compared to GCHS, but speaking numbers to you isn't going to convey our message. I'm here with you today to tell you how we feel, the students, staff, and even admin. Ask almost any student at Granville Central, and they have adverse or anxious feelings to the situation. You're fearful of friend groups being torn apart, being disconnected from the closest ones. The teachers are uncertain of their fate. I've spoken to a large amount of the teachers from our school, and they all feel the same way. Some have even encouraged us to protest, and all have been supportive of my endeavors. They've been more than happy to allow me to post my protest flyers in the rooms. I inquired with the community concerning the situation, and even parents of those at South Granville had the same feelings. Additionally, me and my classmates made a petition for the matter, which has reached 900 signatures and growing daily. I don't come here today to point fingers and say, "Don't shut us down." I know that if we were to consolidate, that Central or South would be the options. I come here to say, "Don't shut down either. Allow three high schools to stand as we rebuild for the influx of students. If any more students channel into Granville County High Schools after consolidation, what will be said?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Dubison, kind of walk us through where we're at with these policy revisions.
Yes. Board members, these are policies that were, that are presented to you after being sent, moved forward by the Policy Committee during their meeting on September 24th, so these are policies for first reading and review. Any changes that you are made tonight, we will make, and then they will come for a second reading and consent approval at the next meeting. We are still working our way through updating the Personnel Policies, which is the 7000s. Most of the updates come from just sort of an overhaul and technical updates of our policy manual from the School Board Association. There are a couple I will highlight that are more significant changes. The first one is 7635, Return to Work. This is a new policy to the Granville County Schools that's recommended by the School Board Association and supported by workers' comp insurers as well. It provides guidelines for how the HR department and the school system will work with employees who've been out on workers' compensation leave and may be ready to return to work but may not be able to return to their full duties, and it sort of provides some guidance on how to work with returning those employees to work with the goal of returning them to work as much as possible. The other one I'll note is 7650, which is also numbered 6350, which is a policy that governs travel reimbursement. This is a lot more detailed than it used to be, the proposed draft that we have here, establishing internal controls for reimbursement to employees all the way up through the superintendent for professional development, really moving what has been practices and internal guidelines into written policy. So my understanding is it's not a change in practice per se, but just wanting to make sure that the guidelines are actually reflected in policy. And the School Board Association noted that one good reason to have this level of detail in policy is sometimes that professional development is being reimbursed through federal funds, and those grants often come with a need to have these internal controls. With those, I think I will turn to the board if there are questions about any of these policies or any others that you'd like me to highlight.
Any questions? Discussion? We have one for the first read, and then the rest for second.
The rest are considered.
Okay. Okay.
So we just need a policy to approve the policies for first read.
Motion to approve policies, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion should be made in second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Okay. We do have on consent items, we have a second read, we have minutes, we have... Okay, we do have on consent items, we have a second read, we have minutes, we have activity bus, some changes to the calendar, and field trip approval. Do we want to take any of these separately, group them, or do you want to approve them all one time?
If we could address 7500 from 4.04 for just a second.
Sure.
Sorry. Just, just want to be on the record. So I had gotten a couple of inquiries from a few staff members that were having trouble with the part of 7500 where it says that it is the policy of the board that hourly employees be provided a duty-free lunch break of 30 minutes unless inconsistent with the safe operations of school or the supervision of students. Employees must clock out during their duty-free lunch break. So some of our employees were concerned that this would take away from their, their meeting their 40-hour work week. And so they weren't, they were not in favor of clocking out. So I didn't know if the, I just received these. I didn't receive them before on first read. So do you, do you want to talk about that at all?
Sure, I'm happy to address it. We, too, have received questions and had discussions with individual employees and their supervisors, our principals about this. And we think by and large the matter is resolved. I think that clause in there, which allows for the safe, safe operation of the school and making sure that children are supervised, provides an out. So we are not enforcing a mandatory 30-minute lunch break for all of our classified employees. I know Mrs. Curran and Mrs. Hines have worked a lot on this. Is there anything, ladies, you would like to add other than I think we've worked through them on a case-by-case basis? Seems to be okay now. Is that inaccurate?
I haven't got anything else. Just so we're clear, super clear for anybody watching online, the word mandatory is not anywhere in that part of the policy.
Thank you. That's correct.
Okay.
That's right. It's, it's protecting the employee's ability to take a duty-free lunch break.
Right.
And that language comes from the Fair Labor Standards Act, which says that, you know, a brief coffee break, five minutes, 10 minutes, you don't clock out, but a meal period of 30 minutes is considered not compensable time. But it doesn't mean that you have to take it.
Right. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, the intent was to provide them with the opportunity to be able to sit down for a lunch.
Absolutely. That's right.
And not being forced every day to work through it.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's all.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
I think that came up in the meeting, meeting.
Motion to approve all consent items as listed.
Second.
Sorry, I have another question. So for 4.06 calendar revisions, are we good to just approve that or do we need to do a separate, like, retroactive motion since it's changing it for September 27th?
No, I think it's okay to, just to do it in the consent agenda.
And Dr. Winmore, can you just elaborate the reason for the calendar change for someone that might be listening?
Sure. There are basically two changes. One was due to the hurricane that blew through on September 27th and we made that a no-school day for students. We have enough surplus hours, so we're okay there for our students. And we made it an optional work day for staff. And all of our supervisors worked with any employees that didn't have enough leave so that if they didn't, if they didn't feel safe going to work and they didn't have enough leave, they're, they're working with them to make that up. So that school day was turned into an optional work day. And then on November 5th, which is Election Day, it's a Tuesday, that was a required work day. We have changed it to be an optional work day in case folks, for whatever reason, didn't want to feel compelled to work on that day.
I think our next section is our academic update.
Need to vote.
Oh, we do need to vote on that. We're going to approve them. You made the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Who seconded it?
Two.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No one opposed, so therefore the motion passes. So we can leave the consent items and we will go to our academic success session, section. And I guess that will be Ms. Perry.
Good evening, board members and members of the public that are watching this evening. I'll invite some folks to come up and join me this evening to present some academic updates for the month of October. Next slide. So we share with you our academic roadmap for 2425. We'll continue to work off of this map for the continuation of the school year, make improvements where necessary and revisions. Next slide. Just a reminder, high student engagement, rigorous assessments and benchmarks, strong POCs, professional learning communities. And our staff and principals have been working very hard to address those. Most recently, on September 13th, we had our first district-wide professional development and day, and that was centered around student engagement. So if you've probably noticed on our social media account, there were some photos from some of the sessions that were held around the district. Very proud of our teacher leaders who also participated in that opportunity to provide direction and share some best practices from their own classrooms with their peers. So our goal is to have 50% of our GPC, our, 50% of our schools at or a grade level of C or better and meeting and exceeding growth. So our next slide. Continue, please. So learning walks. Thank you for those who had an opportunity to attend our first round of learning walks and that invitation is still available to those. Continue to work individually with those personal schedules to have individuals of the board to join us. We have conducted as most recent as that, this presentation. We're at 1,000, but it's slightly above that at this point. And that is learning walks that are conducted by school administrators and district staff as well. Our academic team has conducted about 316 of those and you can just see just some pinpoint numbers from where our schools are with their individual learning walk. So we are working with those principals and APs to get them out of those classrooms more often, to continue to monitor instruction in our classrooms. That's, that's key, monitoring and making sure that teachers are teaching the standards and using the district-adoption curriculum. Just some of our outcomes here, our learning outcomes, we're about 88% of our classrooms have a posted learning outcome. Our instruction is aligned. We want to get that stronger. That should be in the green there. It should be higher than 79% with our instructions aligned to the posted standard. Learners understand the lessons. We're at 83%. And just, there we go. One of the areas that we're continuing to work on is the level of thinking and ensuring that our students are not just remembering and understanding, but applying and analyzing and using the knowledge there. Their teachers are teaching them for real-world application. So continue to work with teachers there for levels of thinking and incorporating higher-order thinking skills. All right. Our student engagement is at 82%. Want to continue to get that up. All those levels in the yellow, we want to get those in the green or higher. Next slide. Our beginning of the year third-grade assessment, that was one of our first administrations of statewide testing that is provided to our grade-three students. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Whitaker and allow her to share for more, more information about our, as we call it, our BOG III reading assessment.
Good evening. So the BOG III assessment, the goal of the Read to Achieve program, it is a state legislative program and it is to ensure that every student reads at or above grade level by the end of grade three. So the BOG III is linked to that. Students take that test at the beginning of the year to see exactly, you know, where they are. And as teachers go through the year and provide literacy instruction, we see improvement throughout the year. It's actually a third-grade test that the students are tested on. And it establishes a baseline, so it lets us know where the students are at this point compared to where we want them to be by the end of the year. Next slide. So here is our preliminary data. You can take a look and see at each elementary school the number of students who were tested, the students, the number of students who met college and career-ready, that means they scored a four or a five, and then the percent of college and career-ready, and then the number who scored a three, four, or five, and the percent. And our goal is, of course, we want all of our students scoring college readiness, but grade-level proficiency is good as well. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker? Could you go back, Mr. Connor? So what we would, these, this is the third-grade standards that we're assessing students at the beginning of the third grade.
At the beginning of third grade. Exactly.
So we wouldn't necessarily expect all of the kids to have mastered this yet.
No. That is correct. And as we're going through the year and they're receiving instruction on those standards, their proficiency and learning outcome should increase. Thank you.
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So, um, so our self-contained E.C. students that are in third grade, are they, I know they're required to take the regular EOG, are they required to take this as well?
Um, so some of our self-contained students are on the Extended Content Standard, correct, Amy? Yeah. And so that's an assessment that is geared towards students who have cognitive disabilities, but it's still included in the N.C., North Carolina Accountability Program.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, can I, so can I assume that those kids left second grade also reading below grade level?
Some of them, yes, ma'am. But we also have to keep in mind the summer slide. And so students take, we are required to give this test within the first 11 days of the school year. And so basically, as soon as they get back in school, we're gearing them up for this. So yes, there are some students who may not have been on grade level, but we also take into consideration that summer slide when we're giving this. And also, those are third-grade standards that those students have not been taught. They're second grades, they're second-grade students in third grade at the beginning of the year, but they're third-grade standards.
Okay, sounds good. All right. And just a question with regards to the number of students tested. Is that, is that the total amount for that school, like Butner-Stemms 77?
Yes, ma'am. The number in, in the third grade.
And the third grade of all of those camps.
Yes, ma'am. But we anticipate that when we come back in the spring and we've done our actual EOG and we compare where we were at the BOG to where we are at the EOG, we will see significant gain and growth.
Okay.
I do want to add that all of our schools should be commended that, that they have students who are already at the third-grade level. So that's important to note, that we have some students who ended up in the, ended second grade already at grade level in the third grade. So we also work with our AIG department about identifying those students for possible AIG services as well.
Ms. Perry, you mentioned that we're trying to get our kids to be more high-level thinkers for the, I guess, for the, for reading problem. So tell me some things that's, that's been, I guess, coached by the coaches, help those teachers ask those higher-order thinking questions, get the kids to think more high-order.
So part of that is, we mentioned student engagement. So the activities that their teachers are planning in their classrooms, not just making sure that students are doing some book works or worksheets and whatever, but also opportunities to analyze problems, analyze passages, literary passages at higher thinking, projects, the types of projects that they're doing, also opportunities to analyze activity, passages as well across grade spans and content areas.
Okay.
Any other questions?
May I make one more, just sort of observation? So I would, the way I think about it, the students in that column that's the second to the last on the right, the ones that met grade level, they're, they're basically a whole year ahead.
Ahead, yes.
Right? They're a full academic year ahead.
They have met the Read to Achieve requirements already at the first part of the year. Any other questions? Next slide, please. All right. Next up is attendance, behavior, and some student services updates from Ms. Amy Rice.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members. It's not the same slide you got from Dr. Northfleet, but I have excuses. So actually, you know, Dr. Northfleet normally provides, in the past had provided information about our attendance, where we were for the month, behavior, where we were for the month as part of the student services update. But I'm sure you all have heard about our transition to Infinite Campus. Sometimes we don't call it that. It's got a little bit of frustration, but with any transition to a new computer system and a new data system, there's things that the state are working out and there's also things that we at the district are working out. One of the things that is still being worked out is the PMR reports. That is our attendance monthly reports where we would say Stovall-Shaw is at 96% or Wilton is at this. So we just now have those reports ready to be pushed out to schools, so we don't have our data yet for that. So we will have that for you next month. The same goes along with behavior. So we were working at putting all our behaviors into Infinite Campus, teaching all of our staff members how to log any misbehaviors into Infinite Campus. And we heard a loud cry out from staff members, "Can we please just have Educator's Handbooks back?", which is what we've used for the past several years. We did not think that we could use that because we had been told by the state that Educator's Handbook would not talk to Infinite Campus, meaning put the information in there. But Carolyn Buffalo in our Technology Department found out that it can and she has made that possible. And so we just last week switched back over to Educator's Handbook. That will allow us to pull data to share with you all. It is, makes data easily accessible to our staff members and administrators in each school. And what also our teachers like is it allows them to put in minor offenses to keep up with. You know, I've warned this child this many times and it was a minor offense, didn't go to the front office, but it allows staff members to see that so they'll know when they need to move the next step in our student code of conduct. So we will have all of that data forthcoming at later meetings. Please give feedback to Dr. Winmore later if you would like that every month, if you want that quarterly at the end of each nine weeks, we'll provide it however you would like. So our attendance tracking, we will continue to focus on that overall student attendance, but one of the goals that we're going to really focus on this year is reducing the number of our students who have chronic absenteeism. There's a big difference between just looking at our overall attendance rate and saying, "Oh, we have a goal of 96%." But if we have a bad winter and we have a lot of flu or we have a lot of strep, the attendance rates may not be at 96% because we don't want children coming to school sick. What we really need to look at is how, what percentage of students are missing more than 10% of the school year? Those students who have above 16 absences. That is what goes on everybody's school report card. It's not your overall attendance rate that goes on the school report card. It's the chronic absenteeism percentage. So we're really trying to target our students who have habitual absences and work to reduce that number. School nurse updates. We have four hard-working school nurses there. I met with them last week. It's just a lot with all of the vaccinations that are due for kindergarten, eighth grade, pre-K. They work really hard to serve our schools and we have posted for a fifth nursing position. And that's part of our SNIFI grant, which is with the Department of Health and Human Services. So we hope to bring another nurse up on board. And the student services update is I'm getting to know everyone, getting my feet under me and I appreciate my team for having my back in all the questions that I have to ask. So thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
I think the last slide is, any questions?
I'm definitely in favor of seeing those, yeah, the attendance and the discipline every month. It's, I feel like it's so informative. And we're, we're so, I've realized this, we are so lucky to have been provided that information previously because I found out that a lot of board members in other districts never see that information. And it's so, I feel like it's so vital to, to see how our policies are impacting our students and our staff.
I agree with you, Ms. Hayes. And I think, too, our principals have enjoyed sort of the competition between schools and if they can increase theirs a little more. And they've prizes and things like that for the kids. So I think it's been good. I like the monthly, too.
Ms. Perry, Dr. Whitaker, what's the update on our partnership with the UNC guy that came and talked us about their mental health?
Thank you. Yes, we are kind of waiting. The lawyers at UNC Hospital System are, they have the draft of the MOU. I believe I shared a version, an early version of- I believe I shared a version, an early version of it with Attorney Dubison, but we don't have anything final yet. We're continuing to just kind of meet with them and plan for a potential launch in January. And I will certainly bring updates back to you guys before we implement anything.
Did he ever follow up and give the, the names of the four other districts that he mentioned?
I don't recall, I can, yeah, I'll have to go back and look.
I would really like to, I mean, if it's being implemented and it's been successful, I would really like the opportunity to, to reach out to them.
Yes, but Dr. Lindsay, thank you for that. Again, we're just, it's still in the planning phase. We, all along, we, we didn't really plan to begin until January.
Okay.
And we've since brought Ms. Rice into the conversation, too. So it's, it's, I think it's going well. We're, we, we look forward to it being successfully implemented.
So Ms. Rice, all our schools, we do have one counselor, all our schools in the county, counselors.
We either have one counselor or one social worker in all of our districts, serving the students in pretty much the same capacity. But every school has at least one counselor, and some schools, larger schools, have two.
Mr. Perry, I saw on slide five with the, with the learning logs, that central office is on there? What, what was that?
So that's, that's an error, that's not correct.
Okay, I'm just curious, that's all.
In central office.
Okay, all right, just don't worry.
So AIG is up there, too.
Amy is also our, what we call our Qualtrics Queen. So she handles a lot of the backend work with our Qualtrics, so that was a test site.
I mean, I was kind of impressed, I was like, oh, you're doing walkthroughs on yourselves.
It's really where there's a teacher, there's a, there's a teacher who's an itinerant, like an AIG teacher, who serves multiple schools, and sometimes in HR, if it hasn't moved, they may still be assigned or originally signed at the district level instead of at a base school, so it's picking them up with that, so.
Thanks for that question.
I have a question for Ms. Rice. The chronic absenteeism.
Yes.
I know there were cases last year. We still pursuing legal?
Yes, ma'am. So the, we send out a three-day unexcused call, a six-day letter goes out for unexcused absences, a 10-day letter goes out, that's, you know, determined by the state that says we have to do those. After that, our schools are the first line. Schools should be contacting these parents, you know, with students who have missed at that sixth day, at that 10th day, and should be bringing them in to put them, the students on a contract, having a conversation with the parent and saying that the next step is you will go to the district-level attendance committee. And it's at that attendance committee that we still try to meet with the parents and say, what are the barriers? What can we do? What are strategies? How can we help? But if it doesn't improve, that the next step would be court proceedings.
Thank you.
No other questions, we'll move on to the next section. I believe that is us as well with our designation. Yes. So with our district achievement, well, go back one slide, please. So our GCPS, GCPS Academic Achievement Plan for our state-designated district improvement, we want to provide some information in the timeline of the action that is required by the state for, for that designation. Next slide. So with our academic achievement, that is one of our, the largest aspects of our strategic plan, that and safety. Safety and academics are, are key in this district. So with academic success, we have to recognize that the things that happen academically have impacts across our district. We've already shared with you our district roadmap for 2024, 2025. We have our school improvement plans that have been updated and being revised currently throughout this process. Remember last year, we had those roundtable meetings where you guys sat through each of the principals' presentations last year, where this is an opportunity for them to make revisions based on that end-of-grade and end-of-course data that received at the end of the year and at the beginning of this school year, so they'll make any revisions as necessary. And we are working on our district academic achievement plan as well. So we incorporate the strategies that we have connected from our roadmap and apply that toward our achievement plan, instead of creating something totally new where we have to do monitor several different aspects of a plan. So we've incorporated that into what we consider our achievement plan. The state has required that we use what was called an NC STAR template, where all this information goes into this website, where we upload and provide documentation for the public, it's readily available on the public's, on our district website. You can view the school improvement plans as well as the district improvement plan as well. And of course, this is the designation that is provided by the state and not by GPS, because we believe our, our schools have done a wonderful job of making gains with proficiency and in growth over the course of the last year. So the next slide. Our academic goals and our district achievement plan incorporates that professional development for teachers, professional development for principals, instruction, making sure that we're using the district-adopted curriculum and resources, MTSS, college and career-ready, utilizing our instructional coaches, they have been vital in the success across our grade spans and our content areas. And of course, PBIS, as you just heard about, attendance and behavior, that, those are key factors in making sure that we reach our ultimate goal of having students graduate at the end of the school year and to be academically successful for college, career, military. So our next slide kind of designates what that timeline is all about. So we have a parent notification that will go out between the dates of October 3rd to the 30th. October 25th, we'll, we begin updating our district and school plans, and they will be entered by that deadline of October 25th. Between the period of November 4th to December 2nd, we've received feedback on our plan, so the public can view and make any necessary comments that they receive, that we can receive to make modifications to the school plans or the district plans. On December 2nd, we'll bring back to you our plan, our actual plan for your approval, and then December 3rd, we'll submit the plan to NC DPI. I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for correcting me. November 4th, we'll bring you the draft plan on November 4th, and December 2nd is when we will present the plan to you for final approval. My apologies.
Question, you have there for December, November the 4th through December the 2nd, public review and comment, feedback received. Now, actually, who is that, what's that audience there?
So that's open to anyone in the, in the public, general public, that could be parents, community, teachers, staff, and what we will have is a Google form where folks can go in and look at each of the plans, select the schools, schools plan or the district plan that they would like to make comments on. They can make comments on any or all of the plans.
Will those be available on the district website or individual school websites?
On the individual school websites. The district plan will be available on the district website. Any additional questions? And this is for information. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, thank you, Dr. Whitaker, thank you, Ms. Rice.
We're now down to one of our favorite things, fiscal responsibility. Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Good evening, Board Members. We are starting off tonight with our, our first budget amendments. We brought the budget to you last month, and this is our first set of budget amendments. This is from our state fund. This is adding two new fundings that we received, sets of funds that we received from DPI, the two digital learning initiative grants, one for the AI grant that Mr. Connor has reported on before, and the other for learning.com. The next amendment is for our local funds, and that is simply a school needing to move funds where they needed to use it, so it, it did not add any additional money to our, our local fund, it's, it's net zero. And then we have our federal grants. If you remember in the budget resolution presented, there were no federal funds because DPI had not yet approved any of our federal budgets. We, however, have since, since then, we have 2.1 million that have been added. You can see at the bottom, you can see a list of the federal grants that have been added. It's important to note that this is not the full amount still. We are still missing our, our consolidated programs, Title I, Title II, and so forth. That's the biggest chunk of what we're missing right now, and so just keep that in mind in just a few minutes as we go through a second portion. We expect that those will be posted within the next month. And then the final budget amendment you have there is for our Fund Eight or Other Restricted Funds. This is in increasing our, our Fund Eight budget by 30, just over 36,000, and that is allocating the, the STAR Intern Grant funds we received, also additional recycling revenue. We moved some funds to fund a membership for the South Granville High School Choir and Band, and, and we received a community donation for CTE program. Are there any questions about these budget amendments? This is coming to you for, with a recommendation for approval.
Any questions? Discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, it's been made, it's been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item I have for you is our budget review. Please note that this is as of August 31st, so this is not a, a current up-to-date budget review. At this point of the year, at the end of August 31st, we are 17% through the course of the year, so just, if you look at that percentage to date, that's just a quick view of where we are in each of those funds. We are on target with our state and local funds. As we look at that federal, that third section, the federal budget, that's where I, the, the don't panic comes into mind, because we have not, again, fully received our funds. They are promised funds, they are just not officially budgeted yet.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any idea yet at this early date, how many charter schools we will be? How many numbers are going out as opposed to last year?
Unfortunately not, we have not received all of those reports. We have to wait for their PMR1, and you can, you heard earlier that our PM, PMR1 is, is a little delayed, so unfortunately, we have to wait for other districts as well. I think we're waiting for about 10 more charter schools to come in. Right now, we're right on target where we were last year, it's just waiting for those last few.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to point out the capital outlay funds. I want you to note that, that, those expenditures are already at 51%. So that's a concern about having enough capital funds to, to manage the projects we need to manage in the district. They are working hard, and a lot of those encumbrances, you can see that there's $1.9 million encumbered, and those are projects that might take us through the entire year and may not even be completed this year, but it's important to note that over half of our funds have already been allocated this year. Any questions about that budget review? The next item we'll look at is the board travel. You have all of one item on there, this is the NCSA, ASA School Law and Policy Symposium. So far, we have, you have a budget of $7,000, and you have expended so far $638. Are there any questions about board travel? And again, this is through August 31st.
Ms. Hines, if you could clarify, this is not just the expense of travel, but it?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for those listening.
Absolutely. This is the travel related to professional development, and that is an important, we, you don't receive a travel reimbursement, so this is all related to professional development. In fact, I'm going to, I'm going to change that, because it's really not board travel, it's professional development.
So that includes like the cost of the?
Exactly.
The sessions, like the registration fee.
Exactly, and you can see that that $638 was registration fees, you can see that on the right-hand side of that, that breakdown. We, we pay for the, we can pay for registration lodging if it's out of town, as well as travel and meal, meal reimbursement related to the professional development. Thank you for that clarification. And finally, we have the summary of COVID funds. Again, this is as of August 31st. We have officially finished, thank goodness, we have officially finished with our COVID funds as of September 30th. However, we were, we're going to report next month, just a nice summary wrap-up of how those funds were expended over the course of this period of time. But to, to August 31st, you can see how many, what funds were remaining. I do have a little bit of a preview. We did fully expend our PRC 181, that, that was the other big pot of SRF funds that we had, and that was fully expended. There were some funds that we had to revert, approximately 110,000 that we had to revert, simply because they were very specific required usage of the funds, and we simply were not able to, to do that. But, but we will come back with a, a more in-depth report at next month's meeting.
Does that say like any more monies based on our time or not the guidelines are too stringent, more funds that we had to send back based on could not find the time or the requirements too stringent to us to?
Not sure I followed what you said there.
You said that we'd spend, send some funds back based on time allotment, so were other funds that the same guidelines may apply, that we had to send back?
Exactly, any funds that we have to send back, like, you know, grants for identification and location of missing students, we had to revert 55,000 there. That, it was very, it was only for contracted services or, or a person, and, and there's some, simply, we would just weren't able to meet that requirement. We had to send back 22,000 of the reimbursements for National Board Preparation reimbursements, simply, we, we reimbursed everybody that we could, and we just didn't have anybody else who was able to submit their information in time. Those are the big chunks that we sent back. Some of our homeless funds we had to send back, simply because we didn't have a method of using them in a way that could be, was allowable. It's just very, these federal funds are very specific on how they are allowed to be used. But again, we will pull that back next month. I, I was, I was being silly and, and saying that, oh, yes, we're finished by September 30th. Officially with these funds, they, the funds have to be encumbered by September 30th. We're not officially finished with COVID funds until December. So we'll have our final numbers in January, at the January board meeting. Any questions, any other questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for managing those funds, and not, we did, as far as I know, they weren't mismanaged.
Well, you may think?
Because they can penalize a system if you do not follow the rules.
Absolutely.
And you did a really good job, you and your folks, keeping us on target.
And thanks Shelby Hunt for that, she has been fantastic at managing these, these federal funds, so I'm grateful to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a great team effort, for sure.
Health and Safety Operations Facility School Reorganization Presentation of Studies. Dr. Winborn?
I'll, I'll try to start us off, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Connor, if you could open the reorganization timeline first. There we go. So we are staying more or less right on track with the timeline that you all approved back in? So we are staying more or less right on track with the timeline that you all approved back in August. We find ourselves tonight presenting the final draft of the studies, and they are there for your review. And just a minute, I'll point out some of the changes that were made from the previous versions that we shared with you at the work session mid-September. The next step after tonight will be a public hearing, and I think maybe near the end of this agenda item, Ms. Dubison can share some updates and some guidance about those meetings.
Absolutely.
And then, of course, with the goal, if a decision or decisions are made, that would need to occur at the November 4th meeting. So, Mr. Connor, if you would go back to study number one. And that is the Granville Central High School Closure Study. We made some amendments based on your feedback. If you will scroll down to page 12. And again, I will, I will not go through each of these again. We, we did that at our last meeting. And they, the information that is contained within is the exact same, except for the additions that I'm about to point out. So on page 12, per your, per your request, we have included information about transfer or choice students. And these are the number of students that are attending each of the high schools that live outside of their attendance zone. So you can see there are fifteen at JF Webb, sixty-five at Granville Central, and sixty-five at South Granville High School. Of course, that number could change. I don't have them broken out by grade level. There could be seniors. In fact, I know that there are seniors counted in those numbers that will graduate before next year. One item that we, the Board would need to address if consolidation decisions are made is, what allowances would you make for the continuation of choice or transfer students? And I think that depends on which of the attendance zones you select, and those maps are, we left them up, posted here behind us. They're also in the studies. Because which attendance zone you choose will have a bearing on the capacity of these schools. It's possible you could choose an attendance zone that maxes out the enrollment at a school and would not allow for any additional transfers. Or it could lead to a situation where maybe you only have thirty or fifty or whatever, you know. You would only have a certain number of spots available, and you might have to institute a lottery. So say, maybe if there are only fifty spots and you had a hundred people apply to transfer, you could direct the administration on how to select those students. And just a reminder, that usually, the transfer window usually occurs in the spring. So you would have some time to consider how that process would work. But again, the determination of the attendance zones drive that.
So for instance, you had, I'm just using a number here.
Sure.
Ten kids that are going to be seniors next year that are at South Granville, but by choice, but they provide their own transportation, correct?
Yes.
But if you did not allow choice, they would have to go back to their district or web and graduate there. So we'd need to decide if we were going to make any exceptions for that kind of situation.
That's correct.
For at least that one year.
That's correct. And I will remind Board members that we require parents to reapply each year. It is not guaranteed to stay at that school for the, you know, the remainder of their career in that grade span.
Instead of doing like a number of slots per school, would it be more beneficial to do it as like a percentage? So that we can make sure that it's, like, we always have a certain amount of, like, the school capacity available in case of whatever?
Yeah. That sounds like a, maybe a smart way to go. Because you do have to allow for students that would move in, actually physically, you know, buy a home or move to the area and live in that zone. Because they would be entitled to go there, for sure.
I could imagine, depending on which attendance zone option, you know, when we make, if we make that decision, we could do something similar like we did for Mount Energy and, you know, Buttoners and that much. What we did for those fifth graders, remember, we decided that they would be able to stay without last year. So that could always be something we could consider.
Yeah, look at what grade level they're in, right? Any other questions about the choice numbers? All right, Mr. Connor, if you would scroll down to page 16. You requested the information for high schools for the number of English language learners by school. And this is something you'd request for the high school study only. And you can see, we gave you a three-year trend data on that. So you can see the web has remained steady, and Granville Central and South Granville have kind of flipped in their trend. Again, we have not broken this down by grade level. Some of those students could be graduating, likely will be. Some could exit the program as well. Again, just a reminder, these are English language learners, and their designation is based on their performance on a, a test of the English language, that tests their listening, their speaking, their reading, and their writing ability. And that's a state test that's given in the spring of every year. Any questions about the ELLs? Sometimes called multi-language learners now, different acronyms. We use the ESL program, English as a Second Language, to teach them, so it is alphabet soup.
The Chinese acronym?
Yes, ma'am, several times. All right, Mr. Connor, if you could scroll to page 22. We include some information about parking. We've heard this come up in concerns from different stakeholders, and a Board member asked that we include this, so we did a little research. This is approximate count of paved parking spaces. And this does not include the handicapped or the, sort of the front of the school curbside parking for visitors. And this really doesn't differentiate between staff or student areas. This is just total counts. And again, I would say that's plus or minus five percent there. It was, we, we used the satellite images of the Google, of the, of the school, the most recent pictures, and just literally counted them. So we might have missed one or two or miscounted.
So that is for staff as well as students?
That's just total number of spaces, because if you think about it, like, what has been designated areas for staff in the past have sometimes been used for students and that sort of things. That's total number of spaces.
Have we ever been in a situation where one of the schools is maxed out on the amount of-
Oh, yes.
Parking spaces that are used?
Is, is that the same point in time where we had trailers?
Uh, no, it is not, because trailers were occupying parking spaces, especially at South Granville High School.
Oh, okay.
They were parked all along that front of the school and around the side.
Oh, wow.
So they were probably taking up at least eighty spaces.
But this doesn't, does, so the South Granville one, does that take into account the, the back parking lot too, behind the school?
It does. It does.
Okay.
Actual paved parking spaces.
But not the, but not the parking available beside the football field or anything like that?
None of the, uh-uh, no.
Roughly how many students drive to school? I mean, you're, you're talking 19th, 12th, you're talking 11th and 12th, whereas primarily in some of them not.
I don't know that answer. And it just, it changes. And, you know, we require our students to purchase parking passes. And there are restrictions on that as well.
Have we had a problem with having enough at South Granville for the existing students?
I remember a time when there was a problem with, at Webb, but it was primarily students, and in South Granville, when students didn't want to buy a pass, and they would park alongside of the road. You know, in the neighborhoods and things like that, walk over to the school.
I can, I can tell you firsthand that there's a ton of free parking spaces at that school right now.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So that's really not an issue.
Yeah, there's, there's currently no shortage of parking spaces anywhere.
What about the school buses? That web seems to be a low number.
Yep. Again, those are the, just really long, widely spaced spots for buses. And we do not have thirteen buses at, at Webb. I don't even think between Webb and Northern Granville, they have that many, do they?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the other consideration there, is that they share buses. And so most of those buses are actually parked between the two schools, whereas at South Granville, because of police parking lot situation, most of theirs are parked at South Granville.
But even then, if you had to, you, I mean, twenty-three bus spots, you could maybe carve off some of the area for student parking if you needed to, maybe get another fifteen, twenty spots. Or re-stripe it.
How many tot, sorry, how many total school buses do we have across the district?
Seventy-two?
That's what I remember, Dr. Ham's in seventy-two.
In our fleet that run, I believe.
That sounds right.
Plus, plus or minus.
And that's, some of those are double routes-
Yes.
On those buses.
Any questions about parking? All right, Mr. Connor, if you go to page 24, again, in the high school study. You all had requested that map right there, which shows the current boundaries, attendance zones for each of the three current high schools. And he also just overlaid the population density, the little people icons, figures. So all the red and purplish-blue ones, that just represents where children live, not car rider or bus rider, but just households. And you can see where they're just stacked all over top of each other. You've got Oxford, Butler, Creighton, Warren. It's much more densely populated, obviously, in the Southern or North County. And then I think on page, next page, is there something else? Twenty-five? No, I think that was it.
Dr. Wembourn?
Yes.
Dr. Ham just texted me a correction. There are seventy-four buses.
Seventy-four, all right. Thank you, Dr. Ham. Appreciate you.
Thanks for listening.
Two are electric. Any questions? Again, that, nothing else changed in this study, except for these additions that you had requested. Can go on to the second study now, if you're ready. There are no questions.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about it then. I want to say thank you to the young man who came tonight. That takes a lot of courage to stand on the other side of the podium. I've, I've done it many times, actually, so I know how nerve-wracking it can be. And, you know, I want to give you the courtesy of, of talking a little bit about what you said, okay? So let's, let's, let's give him a minute. Vicki, Ms. Hines, so could, could we veer off of this for a second? Could I ask, Mr. Lawler, could you go to the meeting agenda from June 24th, please, and pull up Agenda Item 5.03? And pull up this slideshow from, it's Agenda Item 5.03, Budget Development, and go to Slide 6, please. So, June 24th, I think this is really important, and some people need to revisit this. And I know that we have some people online watching, and then I'm, I'm hoping that people that aren't watching right now will go back and watch this meeting later, when they have the time. Because I feel like this is such important information that we covered at the end of last year. Budget Development, and Slide 6, please. Yep, right there. Thank you. Okay. So let's, let's talk about it for a second, what, what this would look like if we decided not to close any high schools. So, Ms. Hines, would you please remind us how far we're into our savings account, our fund balance, right now, to, to balance our budget for this 2024, 2025 school year?
Absolutely. We are, we have budgeted four point one million dollars of our fund balance.
So, so that means that four point one million dollars that we did not get from the state or the local or the federal government has to come out of our savings account to keep our current campuses open, four million. So what does that leave us with in our fund balance at the end of the year, projected? I know you can't give us a definite number.
Approximately a million and a half.
Okay, so that means our savings account will have about a million and a half dollars projected at the end of this school year. What, what is the comfortable position that we like to be at for, for emergen, this is our emergency fund. So what is the comfortable position that we try to stay around?
Between six to eight million dollars.
Okay, and so just, just for reference, how much is a boiler at a school?
I, I laugh, but that's, it's, it definitely varies, hundreds of thousands frequently. Roofs, hundreds of thousands of dollars per school.
So like, you know, if we were to have a really bad storm, you know, and we constantly have leaks at South Granville, at loads of other campuses. If we have another boiler go out like we did last year, we are literally one crisis away from going broke. And unlike the federal government, we are not allowed to operate in the red. We can't take out loans against ourselves to keep our schools open. So I appreciate you coming, because I'm glad that you're passionate about your school. I'm glad that you're passionate about your teachers and your friends, because I would be disappointed if you weren't. And it means a lot that you came here and spoke to us. But the fact of the matter is, is that we're, we're sort of way past the point of keeping every single school open. And I do, I did think about it. So, so other than this right here, what, so if we decided not to do anything and keep all schools open at exactly the place where we are right now, we would literally go broke. The, the other, the other option is to keep all schools open and not make any budget cuts. We would have to go back to the county commissioners and ask them to raise taxes again. So I don't know if anybody was paying attention this year when they wrote, they raised our taxes. I think it was eight cents, I think they had to do. And for every cent that they raise on the dollar, the revenue, it generates about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue. So that means that on top of the eight cents that they just raised this past year, we would have to go back and ask them to raise about five more cents this coming year. And personally, I have a big problem with that, because so many of our families in our communities are already struggling to pay basic bills like groceries and gas. So that's not something that I want to do to every single family in Granville County. Not when we could find some other way to make it work. The other option is to make budget cuts in order to keep every single school open, right? So that's, you know, I wanted to entertain that idea and make sure that we were doing what we can. We did stuff this past year. We cut an executive position from our executive team and, and gave those responsibilities to somebody else. We tried everything that we could to keep the resources as close to the classroom and the students as possible. But this slide right here, this is what is driving our budget overage this year. And so I want everybody online to take a really good look at that slide. Because what I'm not willing to do is take away, I mean, are, are our staff willing to give up their two percent local supplement that we dug, we dug into? that we dug, we dug into our budget this year by almost a million dollars to keep our staff at a living wage? And it shows it right there, $912,000. I made that motion myself, because I didn't want our staff to take a pay cut. And that's to, that's to keep them at the local supplement that they were at. That was not a pay raise. The increased classified got a small, tiny pay raise. It was, I think we did 5% across the board to make sure that everybody got a little bit of a raise, which for me was kind of logical, considering the cost of living and how much that has gone up. I, I don't know where the budget cuts would come from in order to keep every single school open. And so I want you to understand that somebody recently said to me that the board is going to do what the board wants to do. And I think the really sad part about that is that I don't think that any of us want to make this. I don't speak for anybody but myself, but I don't think any of us want to close a school. This is, it's not fun. And I, you may not know this about me, but I just had a son graduate from South Gramble. And I understand the high school experience and how important a good school environment is and school spirit. So thank you for coming and speaking to us about it.
Another point, adding to that, we just got our numbers on our ADM. And we already are 103 lower, which is going to impact next year even more than what we're dealing with right now. So that even adds more, more pressure on our budget.
Right, and I know we've said it a bunch, but maybe, maybe there's somebody new that's listening. We've lost more than 3,000 students in the last decade. So thinking back 10 years ago, when there were trailers in the parking lots and, you know, and, you know, just, they were at the end of their robe, and that's why there was another high school built, we're not in that position right now. And I hope people take the time to read the studies and consider that. Thank you for indulging me, you guys. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Board members, if you'd like, I can go on to the study number two, share with you the additions that were made there. Mr. Connor, if you would scroll to page eight, and there were only two things that were added to this study, page eight. Again, we added the information about choice here as well. And you can see the numbers were not nearly as high, 57 at Butler Middle, 37 at Holly, and two at Northern Gramble. And again, I don't think you're going to be facing, I do not believe at all you'll be facing any issues with choice at the middle school, because you will have plenty of capacity at both schools, regardless of how you draw the attendance lines. Should not be an issue there. Again, some of these students will matriculate and go on up to high school, but we may have rising sixth graders that want choice as well. Any questions about that?
The capacity at the Butler Middle School, what is that right now?
I believe it's six. I don't have it off the top of my head. Let me look.
66%. Page seven.
Do you mean how many students?
The capacity is 604.
Oh, you mean how many did it hold?
Yeah.
And how many are at Holly now?
The current enrollment at Holly, I believe, is at five. Nope, 446. That was the 20-day, the 20-day enrollment was 446. That's on page 10. So there are a total of 1,343 middle school students in our district this year.
So if you added those two together, Butler Stadium Middle and the current Holly, of course, the numbers could be different. You get a total of 1,050, but the capacity at Butler Stadium Middle School is not sufficient to hold those two schools. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. You could, there is not enough excess capacity at Butler Middle School to move all the students from Holly to that school.
As that question, you know, sort of came up, why don't you just do that? I just want to ask me that.
Right, right. Yes, ma'am. And then the, any other questions about that? If you'll go to page 19, Mr. Connor, we added, under transportation, the current middle school attendance zones and the population density icons there as well. So any questions about study number two? All right, I am happy to share that we were able to add information about the conversion of Butler Middle School to an elementary school. So you see that document is there, and I'll just kind of maybe walk you through it very quickly. You also have some of the, some of these printed out in your folder, some of the graphics. But there's just some general background about the school. You know, noting specific characteristics of the campus. And then I'd like to thank Mike Carroll and his team and Ms. Curran for taking the time to do a real detailed analysis of this. You can see a comparison between the current elementary school and the current Butler Stadium Middle School, and kind of how they look side by side, and then estimated costs that would be required to renovate or make some changes. Big things, really, not a lot of changes that would have to be made. It was quite surprising, actually. It was pretty good news. I think we were expecting a much higher dollar amount. You can see the big ticket items that would be required are to make a sort of a playground, facilities for those kids. Unfortunately, the items that are at Butler Elementary School really cannot be moved. You know, taking them up, out of the ground would likely destroy them or damage them, because they are firmly anchored into concrete.
They're relative, huh?
They are. Well, one of the sets is just a few years old, which is a shame. But digging it up and resetting it and all that, it would be damaged. So it's, you're better off going with the new setup. There's some map, there's a map, I think, in your folder that just shows an aerial view, what it would be like if you wanted to install some fencing, perimeter fencing, make it more secure for the children. Of course, plenty of green space around that school to install.
What's the current enrollment now at Butler Stadium Elementary? Quicker than I can fumble through my papers.
Butler Stadium Elementary, I believe, currently has...
452.
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna shoot a little bit higher than that, but it's 452. So they would easily fit with room to grow. Of course, you had asked, Ms. Wims, I know in particular, about pre-K. Ms. Curran, did you want to speak to that? I think Mike discovered some good news there.
Yes, we do have some facilities that are already at the school that, just based on him reading through the pre-K guidelines and what he's done at other schools, already meet the requirements for pre-K. They would have to do some work, like lowering sinks and toilets and things like that, but they have all the things that are needed for a pre-K classroom. And it's the teacher lounges, basically, at the end of each hallway. So there are three options of classrooms that should work for pre-K classrooms that have 15 students in them.
Thank you.
Any questions about this report that we provided here? Just kind of, if you scroll down, you can see, we kind of give a summary. There's some moving costs. Carrying costs for keeping Butler Elementary are included there, if it were just left empty. But about $365,000 would be the cost to convert the school to an elementary school.
I also need to correct that number. I read the wrong line. It's 464 students that they have.
So Board members, that is a summary of the final drafts, the changes that were made, which are now the final drafts of the two studies and the report for the conversion of a middle, of Butler Stadium Middle School into an elementary school. You also have the timeline, I think, depending on your pleasure. Eva can share some information about the public hearing.
Sure, sure. So on your timeline, you have had October 21st, I believe, reserved for public hearing, and that's been on the... Public timeline for a while. If the board is ready to go forward with that, I think we would need that decision to be made tonight, so that we can notify the public of the hearing. And what I have suggested to the chair and vice chair, and this can be, this can be amended however you want. There's not a particular way that these hearings have to be held, but you could do them both in once and have, you know, like the first half be a hearing on the high school, and then the second half on the middle school. We can post, I think, the typical procedures we've used. Each person gets, you come and sign up, anybody can speak. And you, each person gets three minutes. And those, the hearing would be just for the board to receive that feedback. The board would not be making a decision that night. Gramble, although this isn't a legal requirement, you have a local policy that there will be two weeks' notice of public hearings, which is technically today. So I think for the avoidance of all doubt, when the board makes a decision tonight, you know, if someone makes a motion to proceed with the public hearings on October 21st, it would be great if you could include and suspend the two weeks' requirement, because if we post the notice tomorrow, it will technically be, I think, 13 days' notice.
And how will this be noticed to the public? Because I want to make sure that...
Website, bulletin board on the central office, and media list are the minimum. I know, but, but you can obviously put it on social media or whatever you would like to do.
Newspapers?
Absolutely. Every method at our disposal.
Talked about having a sign up for people, if it started at five, at 4:30. But if you've got two different studies and maybe parents for one group might not come, we might have to have two different sign up times. I was thinking about that.
We can do that and have, we will have two different sheets, and when the first study starts, we'll pick that one up, but leave the second one out there with a staff member until the second is ready.
So like if we did the, if we did the high school one first, we would take up the sign up sheet and just go until we were done with the speakers and leave the middle school sign up sheet out until...
Right, right. So we would need staff out to sort of crowd control in the hallway for that transition. But I think you were thinking of doing it at the high school, so you'd have space?
That was our suggestion. Plenty of room. We can set it up in the auditorium.
At South Gramble?
Granville Central High School, the location of the...
Set it in the gym.
Did I say auditorium? I'm sorry.
That's why I was confused. I'm sorry.
I meant gym. My apologies. Yes, Granville Central High School in the gym, and we could set up folding chairs and we could set up tables for the board.
Do we need to decide on the attendance zones before the hearing?
No.
And Ms. Dubison, if the board were to make a decision in November, I don't know that they would necessarily have to decide the attendance zones at that night either. Is that correct?
No, I mean, the decision could be to move forward with the proposal and for the administration to draw new attendance zones to come back for approval. So no, you don't have to know exactly who's going to be assigned to which one at the time of the decision.
That's going to be a frequently asked question, though. So the sooner we can do that, the better off we'll be.
Yes, sir.
I would think that we should have some idea when it's going to happen. Because, you know, if you, if we out there two or three weeks, you know, we're going to need to answer some questions before then about where kids are going to be going.
Yes, sir. I would much prefer that to happen as quickly as possible. Because especially with the high schools, if a decision is made, we need to know as soon as possible where these students will be assigned, because it's going to drive the entire registration process. And typically, we start working on that in December.
So how soon do you think it could happen after the decision is made?
Well, we could maybe spend time that same, at the November meeting. We could have Dr. Hamm attend and go over these maps, or if there's any variation that you would like. Like we've, we just decided there are three options here and two there, but if you want a fourth option, or if you want a third option over here, you want to try to make them match, I mean, he might be able to tinker with it a little bit.
Do we need a work session to just look at that?
There's too many options up there now. We don't want to add.
I have a question about the choices. I have one question. When I read the pros and cons, they're just about the same for all.
Yes, ma'am.
So the busing is going to be somewhat of an issue any way you go.
I think when it comes to the high schools, it's good to try to have them as balanced as, as possible. I'm concerned that we would choose something that would lead South Gramble to be overcrowded right away. And it would be nice if, I don't know that, I don't think it's possible, but it would be nice if these matched as close, the middle school and the high school were as close as possible to one another. I don't think they can be the same. I just don't think it will work. Without having a lot of imbalance.
Dr. Hamm listening?
Yes, he is. He is, and he's prepared to work, to talk about this, I'm sure. You know, there's, there's only so much you can do. That's, that is the bottom line on this. The pros and cons, as you, as you point out, Ms. Williams, they are mirrored. Move one, it causes the other. But Mr. Peace, I absolutely agree that this is not something that I would want delayed at all. If you make a decision to close any schools, the very next breath ought to be about where the kids are going to be going.
Well, well, to me, there's some obvious things that we need to do. We don't have enough money to operate in '25 and '26, so we got to do something for you. Well, 20, yeah. So the sooner we can get this public hearing on the table, that's where we are right now, for I'm concerned. We need to do that first.
Yes, sir.
And once we decide when that's going to be, we can decide whether we are going to do the redo, well, redo the maps then or the next day maybe. I mean, because, you know.
Well, it could come to the Operations Committee to review those and come with some suggestions to the... Yeah, and then at the November board meeting, it could be decided, possibly. We can refer those to the Operations.
The next meeting.
We could schedule it.
I know we set it up. I know it was scheduled.
Yeah, it's the, it's after the, it's after the hearing, so like the 23rd?
The 23rd at 11:00 a.m. I think we purposely scheduled it after the hearing.
Yes.
Date. So that we could have those conversations.
After the hearing that we haven't set yet.
Well, the proposed timeline that we had for that.
Do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
That would be great. Yes. I would say a motion to schedule a public hearing on both proposals for October 21st and to waive the 14-day notice requirement in order to give notice tomorrow.
Motion to schedule a public hearing on both proposals on October 21st and to suspend the requirement of the 14-day notice for this situation. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Frederick.
Between the 23rd.
Two Mondays.
Sorry, I said the way aye.
That wasn't aye. Okay.
Between the 23rd.
Oh. Wednesday.
Okay.
He said the 23rd. He was asking about the operations.
Right.
Yeah. Did we decide on the time for the hearing?
Hmm?
Time for the hearing.
Do you have a proposed time for the hearing?
Yeah, we had talked about starting at five, five to six, and then six to seven. Or do we think that's too early for working parents?
Yeah. I worry about people being able to get there if we start at five.
What about six to seven, and then seven to eight? Or immediately following the conclusion?
Yes. I like the idea of immediately following because I want to make sure that whoever signs up has the opportunity to speak and that we don't have a cutoff time. So do I need to add that or amend my motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
If there's, if there's not any objection to that, we can, Dr. Warren has consensus there.
Would you like to add any provision for submitting electronic comments for those maybe that aren't able to make the hearing?
Of course.
We could include that link as we do for regular meetings.
Yes.
Good idea. And this will be livestreamed as well, correct?
Well
Or no?
They don't have that equipment currently at the high school, I believe. It can be recorded.
I think in the past, they've been livestreamed.
Have we?
But not at Granvilles.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a question or this, I know we're going to be talking those two different, you know, topics. Should we look at what time, which one should come first? Buttersham or, or, you know, the high school? So, you know, come in and get in order because, of course, what year of the week is that anyway?
Some Monday, two Mondays from now.
Okay. So we know that school is the next thing. You know what I'm saying? For parents to have
So I think what we discussed was the high school going first at 6 o'clock? Having the high school proposal first? And then going until we run out of speakers?
Now, I'm just thinking about it, being a public hearing and the parents are going to be there. Do we really think the high school should go first or middle school? You know, the Butler, yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking about getting back home and then school the next day. That's what I'm just thinking about with regards to. You know, the students being back, going to school.
I don't think that's a major issue.
Yeah, it's not major, but
It just occurred to me, we need to make sure there are not any athletic contests in the gym that night. We have the auxiliary gym, of course, too. So let us confirm that.
And you usually get, we generally get a lot of participation from parents, too. I mean, the ones that I've attended seem like they went on forever, but, you know, it was probably like an hour and a half, so. They seem to, you know.
And Board members, you're okay with the three-minute limit?
Is that what we did last time, three minutes?
I believe so.
Is anybody checking max perhaps?
Aye.
So Ms. Curran is checking to make sure we don't have a conflict with the venue. So we will post the notice tomorrow that we will have a public hearing beginning at 6:00. And the first topic will be study number one. And we will proceed, then immediately following that, with the middle school study, study number two. And we will be livestreaming it and recording it. And it'll be three minutes per individual. And they can sign up starting
Electronic comments.
But we'll have the sign up sheet out a full hour before the meeting begins, the hearing begins. Any other details or questions about that?
I'm not seeing any scheduled games, but I do know that playoffs start about that time. So if there were a home playoff game, that wouldn't be on our schedule yet. So I have texted Mr. Farrell just to see.
Ms., Dr. Allen.
Let me go text Dr. Allen. I'm looking at South Granville, y'all.
So what I'm looking at for volleyball is their last regular game is October 10th at Carvero. So that's an 11-days gap in between their last regular season game.
They probably wouldn't have a
A conference game. I'm hoping that's far enough out that they probably, most likely, would not have a conference game. Because that's the only fall sport that's in the gym, correct? Am I
Yes. So, and yes, it is. It's the only one in the gym.
We hopefully will be okay? If not
We're going to put it in the paper two times, correct?
Yes.
We want to the ledger as well as the
Yes.
Butler. Butler Creedmoor.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone, for your input tonight. Next item is capital, human capital management. Ms. Curran.
Good evening. So this presentation came out of our HR Innovation Committee. The members of the committee asked that I share this information of just an overview of where we are at this point right now in Granville County Public Schools when it comes to our staffing. So next slide, please. So our 20-day enrollment had us at 6,356 students. And that is down 103 students from the 2023-2024 school year. So based on that information, our allotments at our schools were incorrect. In some of our schools, we were over by a significant number of staff. And at other schools, we were slightly under staff. So if you look at the key changes of what we were projected to be, which comes from the state versus where we actually were on day 20, some of our schools lost as many as two teachers. So Buttersham Elementary School was down significantly this year. And that loss results in two teacher losses, one enhancement teacher loss. Just as a reminder, elementary schools get their core teachers and their enhancement teachers separately. Middle schools and high schools do not. They are all lumped in together. So they are down one enhancement teacher and one teacher assistant, just based off of their numbers. Also, for reference, again, just a reminder, teacher assistants are only allocated in kindergarten through third grade. Any teacher assistants that we have outside of that are not state-funded through those allocations.
Which was also referenced on the slide that I had Mr. Lawler pull up earlier.
Correct.
If people, if people were paying attention. I think it was bullet number two.
On there, yes. So all of our middle school and high school are locally funded. And, yeah, pretty much. So at Mount Energy, they were down one teacher. They were able to save that position through Title I funding. That happened at the 11th hour because it just happened on Friday that they were able to save that position through Title I funding because of some changes. Granville Academy is down one teacher. Buttersham Middle School is down two, one teacher. Buttersham Middle was actually down more than one teacher, but because of a vacancy, they are only looking at losing one current staff member who's a teacher. Granville Central High School is down two and a half teachers. South Granville High School, down two teachers. Our elementary schools fared slightly better than our middle schools and high schools. There are cuts that were made at our other schools as well, middle schools and high schools, but they had vacancies. And so having those vacancies prevented us from having to transfer or cut a position that a person was in at those schools. Tar River actually earns a teacher. West Oxford earns a teacher. And Wilton earns two teachers and an enhancement teacher. They also earn a TA. I don't know why I left, accidentally left that off, but I did. So they actually earn a TA as well. And so if you go to the next slide, what does that mean? That means that we are looking at having to transfer some of our staff members now in the middle of the year to fill vacant positions because we cannot afford to keep them at their current schools. So that would impact Buttersham Elementary for an enhancement teacher and a teacher assistant. Up until last week, it would have also impacted them for two teachers, but they had two resignations that were not connected to this. And so that prevented them from having to have transfers. Buttersham Middle School and possibly Stovall, right now, we are able to keep that position at Stovall, so we're not having to transfer. I, I just could not look at a kindergartner in the eye and tell them that their teacher was not going to be their teacher anymore. That, that's part of that. It was not, it, it is worth it for us to, to utilize one of our equity positions at Stovall to meet, best meet the needs of those students. Other schools had places where they were over and had been over for a significant number of years. And so this was a change that has been gradually coming. That was not the case at Stovall. They have had an anomaly year with their kindergarten enrollment, and that has impacted them. So that is where that choice has come from. And then we have a Spanish position that is currently shared right now through South Granville and Granville Central. Both South Granville and Granville Central are losing that position. But the other Spanish teacher at South Granville has resigned. And so we are able to move that person into that position full-time second semester. At the high schools, these transfers would occur second semester. At the middle and elementary schools, we are looking closer to November 1st, or November 4th. That's a Monday. And November 1st is a Friday for those. Also, you can see that we are looking at cutting the vacancies. So Granville Academy would be one vacancy. They only have 31 students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And so their one vacancy right now is in that grade span. So they don't technically earn as many positions as they have for that grade span. There have been some allowances made for Granville Academy just based on the number of EOCs or EOGs that people would teach. So that kind of flexibility will need to be adapted in their school for that vacancy. Stovall, again, we were able to, to save that one after this slide was put up. So that's a little bit different. Granville Central has a vacancy that we are cutting. They are still over by one and a half, and so they will still be facing a transfer. And South Granville had a vacancy that we were cutting, and then that other teacher resigned. And so we're able to move that position. So they, they were cut by that other position. So right now, we are looking at holding on our hiring unless it is something that absolutely must be filled. For example, Tar River. We have class size mandates that we have to meet at the elementary schools. And so we're going to have to fill those positions at Tar River, Wilton, and West Oxford. We don't have anyone to transfer into those positions. And Cradle also recently had a resignation that we will need to fill because Cradle is right where they need to be with teachers. And the next slide, I believe, is just any questions?
Ms. Curran, if I may? Two things. First, no one is going to lose their job.
No. No one is losing their job.
I'll make that very clear. There is no reduction in force here. No one's job is in jeopardy.
No.
Second, it occurred to us as we were, the senior staff were talking about this dilemma. In years recent, this has not been an issue because we've had so many vacancies.
Correct.
We're, we're nearly fully staffed now, which is amazing. And it's causing us to have to move people around.
Yes. If you look at the vacancy report, you'll see we only have five core teacher positions open district-wide.
Say that again, Ms. Curran.
We only have five core teacher positions district-wide. And three of those are new elementary positions that did not exist prior to this year.
I just want to point out to anybody watching or the public that having a qualified educator in every single classroom with our students is absolutely the ultimate goal. I mean, for me. I think it is for everybody, but for me. And we have to be able to pay for them. And we get paid by students in the seats. And speaking for myself solely, when I make these decisions, it affects me just as much as anybody else's family. Because currently, I have an eighth grader that sits in a classroom every single day without a qualified teacher in a social studies class. They have a sub every single day. So I get it. It's important. And I promise you that we are doing every single thing that we can to make this happen and to stretch every single dollar and to prioritize the, our student outcomes. It's the most important thing. It's why we sit around this table. That's all.
Do they have any additional questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Curran.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. I appreciate your work on this.
At this time, we will take a break. But before we do that, we need a motion to go into closed session when we return from about a 10-minute break. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're now in closed session. We are now going to take our break and we'll be coming back to closed.
Go to school to sleep instead of learn. And, and, and I looked through all, I mean, I looked through all the policies that has to do with dress codes, and I didn't see anything that was vested. And personally, I just don't think they need to do that.
It is prohibited to wear pajamas in school. Now, whether or not it's being enforced, that's where I
Well, that, that's the reason I knew about it, because of that's not being enforced. And, and I looked through the policies to see was anything specific that says that, and I didn't see it, but might be there.
Yes, sir. It's, you're correct. It's not in the policy, but we created administrative procedure. And we itemize what is acceptable, what is not. And pajamas are prohibited. They are not allowed.
So they get this information?
Tell me where it's happening offline.
I can tell you online. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, my bottom line is what it is.
Yes, sir.
And I, I know it's, it happened at South Granville. Because I got a great, great granddaughter to go to school there, and she wore them one day.
Yes, sir.
One day. She don't wear them no more, I'm like
Thank you, Ms. Peace.
And if it happens there, it happens somewhere else, too.
That's not the only dress code violation going on. Midriffs and stuff abound.
But if, if principals need a policy that say that, then, you know, we can go there.
It's got pictures. It's got pictures on it.
Yeah, we have posters.
Yeah, I know.
But thank you, sir. I'll, I'll address that.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now back in Okay, we are now back in open session.
I love sleeping in this room.
Do we have a motion to accept personnel report as presented?
Motion to approve the certified and classified personnel reports as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Frederick?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Other than that, I think the only thing we have is maybe just review some dates to remember.
That's not accurate.
And there are a lot of them.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
We've got several committee meetings coming up. Board of Education Finance Committee meeting is at 12:00 on the 8th. Community Gun Safety Forum at Northern Granville Middle School, 6:00 on the 8th. On the 11th, G.C. Holly Student Ceremony, 9:30. And the 21st, of course, is the public hearing on schools' consolidation, and we already talked about the, the place would be Granville Central High School, and the time would start at 6:00, okay? Board of Education HR Innovation Committee meeting is at 10:00 the 22nd, and the Policy Committee meeting is at 11:30 a.m. On the 23rd, Board of Education Operations Committee meeting, 11:00 a.m. Mary Potter Center for Education. And November 4th will be our regular Board of Education meeting back here at Mary Potter Center for Education. Do we thank everyone for their work tonight? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.